Good afternoon, welcome to this special meeting of City Council for May 12, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sisalak. Limited in-person attendance is allowed for the meeting. Arrangements have been made for public comment to be emailed prior to the meeting or voicemails left. We will also accept call-ins during the public comment periods. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I also want to thank city staff for the turnaround. We had a council meeting last night and we are back for this special meeting. I will go ahead and open the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment may call at this time. This is the initial public comment period for our special meeting, being conducted for interviews of city manager candidates. Anyone wishing to speak may call (702) 589-9629. Speakers have up to five minutes to speak on an item on the agenda, and as always, we ask that people be civil and concise in their comments. And Madam City Clerk, did we have any emails or voicemails?
No comments were received.
This is the initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, the number is (702) 589-9629. first item on the agenda. And Madam City Clerk will be contacting Ms. Sarah McKee with Gov HR, the recruitment firm.
Hello, this is Sarah.
Hi Sarah, it's Tammy in City Boulder City. You're on speaker.
Okay. Are we ready to start asking questions?
Yes, Ms. McKee. We are here and we have the first candidate, Mr. Nureberg here. Mr. Nureberg, if you'd like to step to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. McKee?
Yes, sir. Hope you've had a good morning, getting to know the city a little bit better. First question is a kind of a two-part question. So, how would you compare your current job to the job that you're interviewing for today? And what do you think would be the differences and similarities?
Well, I think, you know, the current job I have, I'm right in the, we're right in the middle of a large capital construction project. And part of the reason that I am the city manager of Monti is because I have a familiarity with both finance and capital construction. And so I would say that, you know, the job here would be a little bit different. Larger staff, obviously, a larger, more professional staff, I'd say at this point, having met, you know, many of the department heads, I would say that, you know, the city manager job is still the same. You're still managing the day-to-day operations, but it would probably be a little less directly hands-on here than what I'm currently used to. There's a lot of operations that I'm involved in, in kind of super in-depth, and I feel like that you have the staff here that I wouldn't have to be as in-depth. There's more moving parts, so I think that it'd be a little bit different for me. It might actually be, this sounds strange, a little more relaxing for me because right now I spend a lot of time running around, put out fires. And that's not critical of my staff, it's just very small and we still have, you know, I found working for different cities that there's a certain level of things that don't change that you have to do. And sometimes you don't quite have the people to do that, and it seems like what I can see here you do. So, that would certainly be an improvement. And I'm sorry, what was the second part of the question?
The similarities and differences?
Right. I guess, I guess I kind of covered that, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, and comparing the two jobs. Okay? So, if selected for this position, what would be your first three priorities as city manager?
Well, I think the first priority I would have would be to actually spend time with every department head and every department, and actually have a chance to go out and, you know, got to meet them all today and talk about what they do, but really see what they do, see what the operations are, how everything works in the field. On the tour today, I got to see that, you know, honestly, that Public Works and Parks do a really good job with, you know, Recreation, Public Works do a really good job with the parks. They look great. They're beautiful. So, that much I could see on the surface, but there's a lot of other stuff that I probably didn't see today that I'd like to, you know, and get down out of the truck and have a look and then talk to employees. I think the second thing I probably would do is, would love to meet individually, either with the, you know, each council member or the councils whole, but actually each council member is more my style is to start out with, to kind of get to know each council member better and the mayor and, you know, have a cup of coffee and talk about what your priorities are, not just what mine are, because I don't know what my priorities would be till, you know, honestly, that's kind of the council's job to help set those for me. And I think the third thing I'd do is like to meet more of the people. So, the meet and greet today was, it was fun, it was really interesting, the people I got to talk to, but I'd like to meet more of them. You know, the folks I talked to today were really interesting and very interested in the community, and that's something that I very much value, and I can see that that's something that attracts me to this community too. Not only did you say that people are interested, but I saw people interested and talked to them, and they talked about their friends that are interested. Now COVID might have dialed that back, but they're all still really engaged. So, I think those are really the three things I want to do.
Next question is also a two-part question. What do you feel is the most difficult task of any city manager? And what experiences have you had to help you best navigate that task?
I think the most difficult task for a city manager often has to do with getting the employees to understand the vision of the city council, you know, and also getting the citizens to understand it's the vision of the city council. The city manager is a leader, you're really like the chief operating officer, but you're, you can contribute to the vision, but it is the vision of the city council. And, you know, I have worked, how have I dealt with that? Because sometimes employees are like, well, why are you telling us to do that? We don't understand it. And that's usually kind of the problem. And I'm like, well, the city manager, you know, it's just like citizens will come to the city manager and say, you can fix this for me. And often I say, well, you know, I understand what you're saying and I understand what your issue is, but it's really something you should bring to the council because it's legislative, and the council will have to decide if they want to make a change in legislation that would let you build your 40-story building, for instance. That's really simple. But with employees, often it's not. Well, why are we, why are we changing this? Why did you do this, city manager? But I've experienced in doing things like that, like for instance, United City Council that really wanted to change our benefits for the employees, and some of the employees have been there 20 years. And they're like, well, we've always had these benefits. And I understood why they wanted to, had to do with cost, and what the city could afford at the time, and we were in a little bit of a downturn, and, and so I really spent time not only talking to the department heads, but meeting with the individual groups of employees, you know, in that particular city, my Public Works employees are really the most unhappy about it. But we explained how we were going to mitigate some of those effects, why the council chose to do that, and, you know, when we talked about options that the council had, which, you know, one way to preserve the benefits would have been to lay some people off. So, you know, my thing to the Public Works employees, so five of you in this room all need to get laid off, is, would you prefer that? Or do you understand why we're trying to do it this way? And, you know, things like that, when you put it at a level where they understand what the consequence is, I think is really important. And I also found employees really, they really get hung up on benefits, which are important, but, you know, sometimes the smallest change doesn't really change their big outcome. But you need to be able to really talk with employees and mitigate an issue, and the same thing with citizens on, you know, decisions that the city council makes, absolutely my job to support them, but sometimes you say, look, maybe you need to come to a council meeting and let yourself be heard so they understand what the objection is.
Next one, if selected for the position and having had the opportunity to settle in, what do you feel the typical day and work week would look like for you?
Wow, typical work week. Well, I do like some structure, so obviously, you know, we have city council meetings, but I like to try to have, you know, this is a fairly larger organization, but at least meet with, you know, set up a schedule to meet with department heads. Sometimes a group of department heads or sometimes individual units on a regular basis, see what's going on. I like to have organizational task lists, so these are the things you're working on next week, and I'm going to check in with you next week and see how we're doing. Then I also think that, so that's part of it, is meetings. You have meetings with council members. You have meeting with, meetings with legislators and constituents, so I always try to like spend some time, you know, block out some time every day where I'm available. And no doubt, a lot of paperwork comes in, I work on that, but if someone, you know, I kind of have an open door policy, and I like to try to maintain that where people can, you know, pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID, whether you just come in to talk or you can go out and meet them. And I'd say, once I'm settled in, I'm also, would like to, you know, have a list of all the social organizations, like, you know, Rotary and Kiwanis and things like that, and actually schedule myself to go there. And not only talk about what I'm learning about the city, but to learn from them about what they want from the, the city and the community, so I get a better feel of, you know, there's a lot of very involved groups and getting to go meet with them helps, will help me gain perspective. So, that's, you know, first three months, spend a lot of time learning what the city's doing, but also what the community is doing.
How would you, how would your colleagues describe you?
I think that they would say that I generally am serious about the work, but I'm not serious all day, you know. I don't like a really super quiet work environment where everyone's like, oh my God. I'm not the boss that comes around the corner and two people are talking about the Golden Knights game, right? And I'm like, and they're like, oh, oh my God. No, I'm like, hey, how's it going? You good to go to the game? Great, okay. But let's kind of, you know, let's move along here, but, you know, I think I'm friendly to my employees, you know, but I think they also would say that I can be stern. So, I try to be balanced and not, you know, kind of down the middle of the road, although like in most of the organizations I've worked with, I've also done a lot of the HR work. So, you know, I'm fairly readily able to do discipline where necessary. But I try to encourage my employees to do their work, to do their work well, to enjoy what they're doing. And if they really don't enjoy what they're doing, often I'm like, well, then why can we find something else for you to do? Or, you know, what's the issue? Because I think if people enjoy their work, I would think that, that my employees say I try to make it fun. I like to do employee events, you know, do things for the employees, like have a barbecue or, you know, go bowling or something like that where, you know, even if I have to pay for it, I'm more than willing to do that so that we can have a sense of camaraderie.
What do you believe is your superpower?
Well, that's a great question. At the risk of being, you know, hit by a bolt of lightning, patience is probably my superpower. I had to work for a long time to become patient. I wasn't raised to be patient, I wasn't raised by patient people, but I found that patience is a great substitute for, doesn't create an action, but it lets you think and, and think about what you're going to do. I mean, if there's a building on fire, you're going to deal with that right away, but patience and understanding really are probably, that's probably my superpower, because I have to fight to be that way a little bit, but it's, it's really helped me to be a much better person and manager.
Explain your process for delegating tasks to your team.
To me, like I said, I'm kind of linear, so I get a big task, like I go to a city council meeting, and the city council says, hey, well, in two weeks, we're going to do the spring jamboree cleanup. Okay. So, the first thing I do is think about, well, who do, who usually does that? What are we doing? And then I get the affected departments and say, okay, so you know, we did this last year, let's talk about, you know, we debriefed, let's pull out our notes, these are things, but then I, I say, okay, you need to start working on this, you on that, you guys take care of your apartments, get it all set up, you know, come back and see me in two days and let's make sure we got ironed out, and then we'll get with our PIO, get the information out. But it's pretty linear, I like to directly assign tasks to, say, the department heads, and then I expect that they will carry through with their subordinates, but I'm also pretty much like create a short timeline. I don't love long-hanging things. If it needs to be done quickly, then we get it done.
How do you evaluate and also motivate your team?
Well, you know, generally, I use standard evaluation tools on an annual basis, of course, and, you know, hopefully budget be available. You know, we do try to build in bonuses or merit raises or, you know, have done different pay scale systems, but that's part of the evaluation. But often what I do with employees as well, my direct subordinates, is, you know, we have kind of like task orders or things that once again say, okay, we talked about this, we need to get this done, so I really expect to get it done, and these are parameters, and then we, you know, we debrief afterwards. I'm like, did this happen? Did you get this done? Or I'm seeing it's not getting done, you know, and I kind of make little margin notes, and then at the end, we talk about like what worked and what didn't, and how do we motivate it to get it better? It's like, well, we can do this better next time. Here's some suggestions for improvements, what suggestions do you have? And I think the best motivation for department heads is inclusivity. So, what are your ideas? What do you think will make this work? Not just what do I think will make it work.
How do you deal with team members, oh, I'm sorry, let's skip the question. How do you manage stress among your team members?
Well, so to me, that depends upon the team members, and that depends on how, you know, of me getting to know the team members well and trying to figure out what, what they're stressed about. If you know them, you can, like, are you just, and being direct, are you just stressed out because, you know, we have trash day on Friday that we were doing the big city thing? Is what's, what's about, you know, find out what's causing their stress? If it's between different team members, like I say, I run into that a lot, have run into that a lot. It really depends on their personalities, what you know. Often though, I'm like in favor of, hey, let's just go sit down in the conference room, the three or four of us, and have a discussion and figure out what's going on. And, you know, in the professional world, that works. Doesn't always work other places, but that is one advantage of being the supervisor, is you say, hey, we're going to go sit down and talk about this. Well, I don't want it. It's like, you know, we need to solve this. Because tension can really spoil your productivity, and if you don't identify it, you get that long-term, like someone's mad at somebody, you know, for something that happened six months ago is not productive. You know, people need to work together. So, I try to, you know, take it head-on and put the people together and figure out what the, the problems and the solutions are.
How would you deal with team members who do not agree with one of your ideas?
Well, that happens all the time, I'm sure. I mean, how do I deal with that? I want to hear what their ideas, you know. Maybe, I'm left-handed, so sometimes I say stuff that, I know it sounds silly, but people that are right-handed look at, you know, they give you that little head tilt, like, what did you mean? And you get used to that, and it's like, okay, you disagree with this, why? You know, I'm not an emperor, I'm a city manager, and, and part of that is working with the team. So, what is it that's wrong with that? Or how could we make it better? I like to hear that. Doesn't always mean I'm going to agree with them, but I do want to hear it. And sometimes, actually, what I find most often is, you know, as professionals, they have an idea or a little tweak or a little turn that's better than what we were thinking originally. So, that's using them as a resource, and I think that that's, once again, inclusive and gets them to participate in the decision-making process.
What is the role of city staff with, with regard to the development of policies that relate to budgeting, public safety, and recreation facilities?
Well, as far as what their roles are, I mean, if we're talking about developing a new policy, if you have people working in those disciplines, you know, I'd say public safety is a little bit different because often the changes there are governed by changes in the law. That kind of goes to legislators, legislators, legislature, sorry, saying, hey, you know, now you have to do things this way, law enforcement. That happens every year, every legislative session, this happens. So, that kind of, most of those changes, to me, are funneled through, you know, your attorneys and your liability companies and, and, you know, police officers, professional associations. So, there is that input. But developing policies for things like recreation, I think really comes down to your professionals having ideas and thinking, okay, we really need to do this, and then kind of funneling those up, usually through the city manager, or inviting that employee to come talk to the city council about, hey, we've got an idea, or we've got a thought, or maybe the city council has gotten, you know, an idea for some policies. I mean, I think it's good for staff to react to that. Sometimes I might be the one that would talk to the city council and say, look, you know, you guys are talking about this, but there's this thing over here that we need to consider. I won't know all those answers immediately, but I think staff has a really important role because they're boots on the ground. So, they know what's happening there. It doesn't always mean they know what's going on at a different level, but meeting those sets of ideas, you usually come up with your best policies.
Another two-part question. What is your conflict management style? Not necessarily with personality, but conflicting uses of and/or demands for resources or conflicting solutions to a problem.
Sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't think I caught it all right.
What is your conflict management style? Not necessarily with personality, but conflicting uses of and/or demands for resources or conflicting solutions to problems.
Well, that never happens. Oh, okay, it happens a lot. Well, I, to me, once again, it is, first of all, I have to think about like, what is the policy or the direction that I have from the city council, from my bosses? So, what is the city council wants? And what does the budget say, right? So, the city council said, hey, we really want this thing to happen, and then you budgeted that way. So, you know, you may have two departments, one saying, I really need to do this this year, but, well, you know, we were talking about budget, you didn't say anything or much about that, and so this other department, they got that resource. Realize that, I realize that you need that. Often what I do in those kind of situations, say, hey, I understand what your need is, you know, we could see if we could do a mid-year budget amendment, but we're not just going to throw this money at it without you putting it together enough for the, I mean, the council approves the budget, so you got to put together a presentation and we have to have the resources. So, once again, that kind of goes to patients on their part. If you want to have the opportunity to make this change, you have to do the work, you can't just be upset that you didn't get what you wanted. Because I could tell you that, so your police chief today said, you know, they have a really well-funded police department and, and, you know, things are going great, and I thought, wow, I have never heard a police chief actually say that. So, that's amazing. What I always hear from police chiefs is, well, we need the newest KRY 7744 amplified microphone headset thing. How much does that cost? Oh, they're only like, you know, $8,000 a piece for us. Okay. Radios you have work? Yeah. Okay. Well, let's do a budget request for that next year and see if it survives, right? But often, what those departments don't get, and I try to point out, is you may want that, and it may be great, and it may be the coolest thing, but there's only a dollar. I always say, there's always a dollar. And you got a pair of scissors, and we're going to cut that out. So, if you need a larger piece of that dollar, then somebody else is not going to get that. It's up to the council to decide that, not me. So, I often let the, the council decide what their priority wants to be, and if there's changes, do you want to do amendments? And then finance gets to weigh in and say, that's a bad idea, usually, so.
What civic or professional organizations have you participated in over your career?
So, I'm a member of ICMA, International City and County Managers Association, Colorado City County Managers Association. I've been in Rotary off and on a few times, a few different places. I'm also involved in a couple of economic development efforts. I'm the president of the Rio Grande Economic Development, which is, I guess you'd say it's a member organization, our city contributes to it. Our city contributes to it. Um, but it's made up of city managers and bankers and other professionals who are trying to do, like, region-wide economic development. Um, ah, let's see. And that is, also been, uh, you know, a certified HUD housing inspector. That's kind of an older thing. Um, and that's probably most of it.
What can local government, how, excuse me, how can local government best support business activities?
Well, I think there's, there's lots of techniques, and there's lots of beliefs in how you can do that. I think the simplest, the, the first simplest thing is to be consistent in how you apply regulations. And if you have assistance programs and how those provide assistance consistently, that doesn't mean everybody gets everything they want, cause the world is worked that way. But consistent application of laws and regulations. And then when there's opportunities for funding, and, and you decide that those are priorities, um, where it can be provided. So, you know, there's all this CARES Act money, um, that's coming. I guess they just actually came out with guidance on it yesterday, what you can do with it. Um, so some of it can be used to help business. So, once again, balancing needs, but, you know, talking like about historic preservation. So if you have some of that money, can you set that aside? You look at all the competing interests to help people do historic preservation? Are part of the preservation? Or, you know, how can you use some of your money to do that? I think, um, that helps business, particularly if you're doing historic business properties. Um, but I think it's a fine line between the government, you know, providing wholesale assistance to businesses and businesses standing on their own. I mean, you know, this is capitalism. So there's things that, that the city can do, like, you know, having good infrastructure is really important. You know, public works guys will love that, but, um, it's true. If you have unreliable infrastructure, if your streets are crumbling, your wastewater, you know, your sewer pipes are always clogged, uh, if you have unreliable electricity, those are detrimental to business. We had to shut down our business yesterday because the power was out for six hours. I mean, so consistent provision of services is really important. And then finding equitable and fair ways to distribute some funding. You know, challenge grants are great. That's one of my favorite things that I've been involved with, where you're like, okay, you need X amount of money, and if you can match it, like, you need twenty-five thousand dollars from the city? Well, if you can match ten, we'll do fifteen on a business development proposal. That kind of thing can work. Um, the other thing, though, that cities have to be aware of if you do that, is sometimes you'll fail. And I've always seen that that's the hardest thing that people have to deal with. It's like, well, the government failed on that, that project didn't work. Sometimes they don't. But how many business startups don't work? A lot, right? Start a restaurant, the odds are difficult, so. Um, government can have a role in that, but I just don't think it's a huge role.
Mayor, those are all the prepared questions we have today.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Hoskin?
Yes, thank you. Uh, are you a micromanager?
Uh, no, I'm not a micromanager unless I have to be. Um, generally, my style is not to be a micromanager, which means that I extend trust to the department heads that I'm delegating to. Um, but I have had department heads find that if they're not doing their job, oh, I can become very micromanaging until they, uh, get the message. So, but not as a rule. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Um, a question I have, uh, Boulder City is a municipal utility, uh, taking care of electric, water, and wastewater and landfill. Uh, what background would you have that would relate to, uh, the management of a utility like that?
Okay, well, um, so I worked in a city that, a town, I guess, um, if you want to call it, town of center, where we had, uh, natural gas, electricity. Uh, we did not have, uh, we didn't pick up trash. We had, um, water, and we ran the wastewater system for the sanitation district. So, um, I was actually, for a period, um, the public works director as well, because the one that we had, I had to let resign. Um, so pretty familiar with utility billing, utility operations, those kind of things. Um, I've also worked in other cities where we had the trash, um, as well, it should always have worked with water and sewer utilities. Um, you know, and gas and electric, some. But I understand the, the systems. Um, when I took over in Center Colorado, they didn't really even understand their system process or their billing. We actually brought in a, a really renowned consultant, which was controversial because town board wasn't sure we needed him. But I actually worked with him, we didn't have a finance director, um, went through the entire utility billing system, got that upgraded. Um, and I work with utility customers. The town I work in right now, we have a lot of issues with water and sewer customers. Uh, and I work with a lot of them on their billing issues, on their account issues, figuring out what's going on. Um, and with the public works folks, on making sure that we have work orders and dispatching. So I'm pretty familiar.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Well, Mr. Nurburg, I sincerely appreciate you coming and, and working with us. Uh, you know, these situations are always somewhat of a challenge. Uh, I'm glad you had an opportunity to see our community, if only briefly. Uh, and again, thank you very much, and we'll be making a decision, I assume, within the next week or two.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of the council, it was nice to meet you all. And, uh, yeah, I appreciated the tour and the opportunity to meet the department heads. And, uh, you know, you have a great community. And so, you know, I, I hope I, uh, have an opportunity to serve you. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. McKee, I, I assume we will do this then, similar to what we've done in the past. We'll take a fifteen-minute recess, uh, allow us to complete our evaluations, and then move on to the next candidate. Is that what you had in mind?
Yes, sir, that is.
All right. Uh, we will then take a recess and reconvene at twelve fifty-five. Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, we are now at the stage of, uh, our second candidate interview. Mr. Taylor Tedder, if you'd come to the podium, please. Uh, Ms. McKee is on the phone, and we'll ask you a series of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Ms. McKee?
Good afternoon, Teddy. I hope you had a productive morning and were able to see a lot of the city. Um, first question is a two-part question. How would you compare your current role to the job that we are interviewing you for today? And what do you think are the differences and the similarities?
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. I, I truly enjoyed, uh, this morning, getting to know the staff and meeting with the public. Um, in regards to your question, so my current role as assistant city manager with the city of Leavenworth, I do supervise our municipal court, our information technology department, uh, convention and visitors bureau, so dealing with tourism. Uh, and then our economic development efforts, as well as having a hand in, uh, the budget. And I also am responsible for our capital improvement plan budget. Um, I think a lot of those similarities would carry over to the city manager position here in Boulder City, um, being, uh, a town based on a lot of tourism. So I could carry over those skills. And I know that there's a lot of historic preservation efforts that are, um, definitely on the forefront of your priorities. And I've had a lot of experience with that in my current role since Leavenworth, the first city of Kansas, incorporated in eighteen fifty-four. So I've had the experience on both sides of the fence of dealing with the property owners that need assistance with historic preservation. So ADA, uh, retrofitting to make sure that the building is fitting with the character it was originally intended. And dealing with tax credits and the historic registry, things of that nature. But I've also been on the side of being the property owner as the city owns several historic properties, including city hall, um, our riverfront community center, which was built in eighteen eighty-eight as a Union Pacific Railroad depot. And, um, so we just finished a three million dollar stone restoration project on that facility. Um, but I think a lot of those would carry over, as well as my kind of holistic view of economic development really kind of has this cornerstone around, uh, a solid business retention and expansion program. So essentially, what I believe that means is supporting the current businesses that you have and making sure that they have everything that they need. Um, current, growing current jobs is ten times cheaper than attracting new ones. So making, uh, on our fabulous tour this morning, we, uh, went by several of the smaller manufacturers, um, and some other, um, businesses on the north end of the community, that those are the types of businesses that I heavily focus on in my role, helping them, um, grow their businesses, expand, come up with new project, product lines using state, um, programs that are available for them. And, um, also helping small businesses and entrepreneurs. So I think that, um, you know, assisting the economic development coordinator that I met earlier this morning and make sure he has the tools he needs and, and direction. So, so I think, um, a lot of those things would definitely translate. And I've, I've done a lot of research, um, so much research. And I'm so appreciative for your website because it's just got a wealth of information on it. And I've pinpointed that Boulder City actually uses a lot of the same software programs and several of the other systems that we use at the city of Leavenworth. So, um, Munis, which is the enterprise solution for all of the accounting and budgeting and, uh, code cases and all of that, H R, I know how to do that. So I feel that I could literally walk right in and have the operational, um, knowledge to be able to tackle the higher-end, um, visions and goals that need to be accomplished and, and large tasks. So, so I feel that, um, you know, I can go in there and start, start preparing the budget and, and doing all of those things. So that, that knowledge, I think, would directly, um, help me have some keys to success with Boulder City. Um, a few other similarities, just dealing with the public, um, I really enjoy that. Um, responding to the requests and, and dealing, uh, with communications with the council. I regularly talk with our city commission, mostly on a daily basis. And, um, I really enjoy, enjoy the communication side of it.
If selected for this position, what would be your first three priorities as city manager?
Well, I think my first priority would be continuing to get to know the staff better. So, um, listening a lot, um, learning from them. They are hired as those subject matter experts. So making sure that they have all the tools that they need and resources to succeed. Uh, that would definitely be my first priority. Uh, second priority would be continuing to form relationships with all of the council members. I know that we'll have two new council members starting very soon. So onboarding them and helping them become familiar with the city and telling the story of, of why we do things a certain way and, and how we can best get them the information that they need, whether, um, that's using the current document repositories that the clerk's office has done a great job putting together through Laserfish, um, finding, uh, existing memos and policies to provide them to make sure that they're up to speed on everything. Um, I think that's definitely, should be a priority for any city manager, uh, making sure that the elected officials are well-informed and that there's no surprises. And third, um, I've really taken a hard look at your strategic plan and economic development plan and, uh, goals and priorities. So I would, my third priority, um, starting the job, I would be combing through that, making sure that we're accomplishing everything that we need to be accomplishing and looking at other ways that we could, could accomplish those goals. I, um, I was sitting around on a, a Saturday morning and came across your, uh, STAN Tech facilities plan, uh, very comprehensive plan. We actually use them to do our, uh, pavement management ratings. Um, and I realized that it sounds like the council's interested in staff formulating a plan based on that study to come up with recommendations and, uh, a plan to plan for the future of how we're going to renovate and sustain the, the current buildings that Boulder City does have. So, um, just looking for priorities like that, um, and that third goal, I think, would definitely be something I'd enjoy working on.
Another two-part question. What do you feel is the most important task of the city manager? And what experience have you had to help you best navigate the, those tasks?
That's a great question.
I, I do think the question's slightly different. I think it's listed as, what is the most difficult task?
The most difficult task for a city manager? Well, I think it really could be a number of things, but I'll say that communication and making sure everyone's informed. Because a lot of times, it, it probably can be difficult to communicate with staff and all of the elected officials and make sure that everyone's on the same page. But I think with advances in technology and, um, making sure that I'm issuing all of the memos and things to make sure that everyone is really well-informed on policy and how we are moving forward as an organization based on the council's input, that is, is definitely a way to accomplish that. On the other side of communications, um, residents. So that's, that's another part of the difficulty that a city manager can face because residents might not know everything that the council or city employees know. So using social media and our channel two, making sure that we're getting everything out for all ages, incomes, and abilities of, of the residents to make sure that we're reaching them. And, um, currently, I put out a, a city newsletter quarterly, and it goes to every rooftop in the city. So there are residents that, that may not use social media or have a subscription to cable. So making sure that we're, we're capturing and, and communicating with all of those people, keeping them informed. I think that can be tough, but definitely something that I can accomplish.
If selected for the position, and having had the opportunity to settle in, what do you feel the typical workday and work week would look like for you?
Well, I think a typical work week would really kind of look similar to how I approach it now. So I make priority lists of things that have deadlines or what needs to be done first. And of course, any messages, text messages, emails from, from council members would be attended to immediately. Um, I don't like to make anyone wait. Um, and then I would, of course, with calendars, making sure that, you know, all meetings are being all meetings are being attended. And if there's a scheduling conflict, making sure that we have a staff member at some kind of board or intergovernmental agency meeting if I'm not able to attend. And then I, I would also, um, you know, a typical day in the morning when it's slow, sorting through emails, making sure that they're filed correctly. I like to keep folders to keep everything organized and make sure that I am getting back to residents, no matter what their, what their request is. Um, I think it's important to at least, even if we don't have a solution, to make sure that, that I'm communicating back to them because that just isn't a good image that, that we would want to promote. And with the four-day work week, um, I've, the previous city I worked for, the city of Derby, a suburb of Wichita, we had a four and a half day work week where we had a half day on Fridays. But the city manager has a lot of other commitments and meetings that typical city employees don't have. So I would attend any intergovernmental or chamber meetings that I needed to be at on Fridays as well. I've already kind of thought about that and it's just, you know, one of those things that, that you're definitely going to do what it takes to get the job done. So that's, that's what I would do. And I would also make sure that, that all of our city employees are, are, um, you know, attending the meetings that they need to attend to as well.
How would your colleagues describe you?
I think that my colleagues would describe me as extremely fair and personable. I have a great relationship with all of our department heads and employees and I really enjoy uh, getting out to our different facilities. We have a service center where our parks and public works department operates out of. And I enjoy going there for employee of the quarter or, or other meetings that we have so that I can talk with the different employees and, and get to know them a little bit better. And, and whether it's fire department or police department employees, when you have uh, essentially an organization with all of your employees spread over different facilities, it's, it's good to get out there every once in a while, um, and, and make sure that you're meeting them and, and seeing how, how things are going firsthand. Currently, um, because I supervise our court, uh, municipal court, it's over at our justice center, which is a shared facility between our county sheriff's office and our police department. So obviously I'm not there daily, so I make it a point to go attend court at least once a month to make sure that, that I'm there and, and talking with them. And of course, using email and phone as well, so.
What do you believe is your superpower?
And I can only pick one. No, okay. So I, I would really say that it's public finance, whether that is budgeting or creative economic development techniques. I'm able to find a way to make projects happen. And I have a couple of examples. So our community, because it is the first city of Kansas, it's got a lot of infrastructure issues. So we had a, a east to west street that is a major arterial in town. And it was terribly failing and it needed essentially, uh, eight million dollar complete reconstruction with stormwater and sidewalk improvements curb and all of that. Um, it was not programmed in the budget or the CIP. And so we took a look at how we could make that project happen. And one of our bond payments for our new animal control facility was actually falling off. So we were able to bond that project and because it was a commission priority, we were able to move it up and design it and complete the construction within a year. Um, so that was, that was a really exciting project and, and driving on that road just, uh, makes me look back at that and, and smile. Um, another, another, um, project would be our community was essentially out of industrial space for, um, high-value employers to locate in. So we approached our county and they were amenable to giving us half of the project to put in a new, uh, business and technology park. So this was a eighty-two acre parcel that the city purchased. Um, it was a ten million dollar project and then the county provided us with five million dollars in funding. And so I oversaw putting in utilities and having eight hundred thousand tons of cubic feet of dirt uh, moved and now it's, uh, ready for its first tenants. So we went from having zero sites available to now about, um, fifteen. So, so that was another example of how I was able to use that, that public finance, um, superpower in action.
Explain your process for delegating tack to your team.
Well, um, I think delegation is definitely part of the city management life. Um, and making sure that you're not delegating too much to one person is definitely something to keep in mind because they also have a lot on, on their plate as well. So making sure that whoever you delegate something to will get it done. If, if they don't have the bandwidth to complete something, then perhaps retooling whatever needed to be done or finding someone else that could, that could assist, um, I think is definitely, uh, the way I approach it. Um, I also really place a lot of faith in my coworkers and those around me. So when I do delegate something, I, I do expect that it's done and will obviously follow up and, and make sure that, that it was done to the level of detail that we needed. But, but, um, that's the great thing about having such a great team that, um, Boulder City has is you do have people that are properly qualified and really know what they're doing.
How would you evaluate and also motivate your team?
So on the evaluation side, um, performance reviews are a great way to evaluate staff. Um, a lot of times employing a self-review helps give a little bit more perspective on how the employee thinks that they're doing. Um, so you can get that background info from them. And then you're able to do more of a, a full bird's eye view assessment of, of all of the things that as their supervisor, you know how they're doing. Um, I also have, have done personality tests in the past to make sure that we're giving everyone the correct working environment for them because depending on their personality, um, it might mean that they work with, with different people in different ways or prefer different communication methods or, um, things of that nature. So I think that's another avenue of being able to evaluate people based on their kind of intrinsic traits. Um, and then Sarah, what was the second part of that question?
Motivate them.
Motivate. So currently we do a few things in, in my current city, uh, for motivation. We do a employee of the quarter, um, where we grant them with a day off and, and for, for going above and beyond. Um, employees are able to submit anyone for that. And then we have a employee of the year that gets, um, a few more benefits than the employee of the quarter. And then they're recognized in our St. Patrick's Day parade. Um, it is kind of a, a prideful thing of the staff when someone gets that and, and they get their picture on the wall. And, and, and that is, um, something that we do. But I think for some additional motivation, um, it depends on the person really. Um, so I've, I've done things where on a performance review, one person might be extremely motivated to continue doing well if they get an excellent, exceptional score on their performance review. And others, that doesn't mean as much. So, um, they might need positive reinforcement, um, day-to-day or, um, good job, um, atta boy type, um, approaches.
How would you, how do you manage stress among your team members?
So managing stress among team members is definitely a part of the job. And I think that it, when there's a stressful situation, it's always good to take a step back and see what's causing the stress and how can we alleviate that? So if, if it's interpersonal stress, like, uh, two people having a disagreement, then, you know, we can sit them down and try to work those out. If it's workload or, or perhaps a difficult project or funding issue, then looking at, at ways to solve that or, um, not doing that project or, or reevaluating how we're, we're going to accomplish that project, that, that's a way to alleviate stress. So currently, um, we're doing a project on our city hall, um, for a parapet repair project. Um, because it was built in nineteen twenty-two, um, the building's made out of terracotta and it has tiles, um, to make it look like stone on the outside. So the contractor would, their scope of work was to remove the tiles, check the condition of the terracotta and then repair any places necessary. Well, after they've removed a lot of tiles in a lot of different places, the terracotta is all fine. So instead of having them continue to, uh, essentially use our resources to continue checking what's, what's fine, uh, we were able to retool the scope of that project quickly. And so, so they're just going to repair the, the grouting and, and the places that did need repaired. So, so it's always, um, great to have the ability to pivot and make changes um, so that we're not wasting resources.
How would you deal with team members who do not agree with your, with one of your ideas?
Well, that's another great question. We, I definitely think that when someone disagrees with you, it's good to listen to them, uh, hear their side of the story. Um, they might have a different perspective or a different way that they believe something should be done. At the end of the day, um, I work for the council. So I will do what's best, um, to accomplish the council's goals and balancing the best interest of the public. Um, residents can be very passionate about their community, especially one as beautiful as Boulder City. And I'll definitely balance that with, with our priorities. But on the, on the other side of that, I think while I'm listening to that person that has a differing point of view, I'll also explain why, uh, we're going in this direction. And a lot of times using, uh, critical thinking skills and simply making someone feel heard can, can reduce some of that, uh, disagreement.
What is the role of ci- city staff with regard to the development of policies that relate to budgeting, public safety and recreation facilities?
I think that the staff plays a large role in developing policies because they are essentially the boots on the ground, doing all of these different tasks to carry out city business. Um, I've always taken the approach that, that the city manager does not single-handedly accomplish anything without the staff. And having those subject matter experts is another tool to use in policy creation and updating, especially finance policies. Um, the finance department is definitely the most knowledgeable of all of why we do things a certain way. Um, I came across your, um, budgetary reserve policy of that sixteen point six seven percent and then twenty percent on all of the others. And not only did you accomplish it, but I think that the finance department probably played a large role in setting those, those reserve levels because they're the ones dealing with all of the budget, uh, day in and day out. Um, as the manager, of course, you're highly involved and very much, um, pinpointed into that. But y- you're handling a lot of other, um, policy and interpersonal communications throughout, throughout the workdays. So, um, and on the other side of that, um, community development deals with all of the developers and home builders and residents that are, that have questions about the use of a property, whether it's in a certain zoning district. So they know best, um, how to prescribe those policies.
Another two-part question. What is your conflict management style? Not necessarily with personalities, but conflicting uses of and/or demands for resources or conflicting solutions to a problem?
Well, I think my call, um, conflict management style is, I would describe it as matter-of-fact. So if, if we have a conflict, we have what we have and what needs to be done. So providing the roadmap on how to get there, it really is factual. And working with people, uh, to possibly alleviate some of their concerns or it could be small pieces that can be changed and easily managed. But really, um, whether it's wanting to rezone a parcel that's surrounded by general business to residential, um, the, the conflict and the solution, the ordinance says what, what it needs to be. So, um, you don't want to go against essentially what residents would expect, what the council wants. And, and so I would approach conflicts matter-of-factly. So without letting emotion get involved. A lot of times I have dealt with conflict from residents, whether they wanted an alleyway paved. We have a policy that says we, we don't maintain alleys because we're focusing on the roads and parking lots. And communicating that to them might not always be what they want to hear. But the policy is the policy. So just taking it matter-of-factly and, and trying to listen to them to make sure that they know that we care is also, I think, helpful.
What civic or professional organizations have you participated in over your career?
That's a great one. Um, so I'm a member of the International City County Managers Association. And not only have I served on two of their conference evaluation committees, um, not last year, but the prior two years, um, at, at the in-person conferences that they held in Baltimore and in Nashville. Um, I've also received, um, a scholarship when, when I was younger to attend one of the conferences, which was really helpful. Uh, their young professional, uh, scholarship. And then I'm a member of the International Economic Development Council, which is the, the organization that I obtained the Certified Economic Developer designation from by, um, essentially sitting through a two-day testing, uh, period. Um, I'm also a member of our state, uh, Kansas Association of Cities and Counties. And there's so many. Um, I'm a, I'm a member of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce and I'm on their Legislative Affairs Committee. And, um, I'm a member of the Young Professionals Organization. And then I'm also a member of Alliance Club International. I'm actually the president this year of our Leavenworth Lions Club. We're the largest club in Kansas and one of the largest in the nation with over two hundred members. Um, a lot of cities might have a, um, a rotary or a lion's and, and ours is, uh, our Lions Club is, is much more prevalent. So those are. So those are the ones that I can think of off the top of my head.
How can local government best support business activities?
Especially now with the pandemic. I, I think providing direct support to entrepreneurs and small businesses is probably the most important way that, that local government can provide support to local businesses. I've really focused a lot on having a solid business retention expansion program as well as supporting entrepreneurship. In Leavenworth, with, with Fort Leavenworth, the Intellectual Center of the Army, where they bring in a lot of high-level majors and, and officers from all around the world to attend essentially master's programs. They, a lot of times when they're exiting the military, they're looking to start a business. So something that I started is they have a Boots to Business Program where it supports what they've coined "vetrepreneurship." So I go attend to these courses and present to them information about what we can do at the city and as well as nationally for those that, that are going other places. So make sure that they know all of the tools available to them through small business development centers and local and state incentives, I think, really helps, helps them kind of jumpstart their entrepreneur endeavor. And then we provide a lot of different low-interest loan programs and grants for facade improvements to businesses. And then large-scale businesses, I've, I've dealt with industrial revenue bond financing where the city has no financial repayment piece of that. So it usually, in Kansas, provides a sales tax exemption and then possibly a tax abatement for those high-value, large employers that are essentially manufacturers. And it's, it's a very narrowly prescribed topic that they can have as their, their business. But yeah, I think, I think that business development and economic development is the lifeblood of community and especially in communities where they have a, a high rate of tourism. So, so making sure those entrepreneurs are supported, especially now, I think, is, is paramount.
Mayor, those are all the prepared questions we have today.
Thank you, Ms. McKee. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Hoskins?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you the same question. Are you a micromanager?
Not at all. I, I really believe giving people space and, and letting them work under their own management style is very key in having a happy employee base. I definitely, you know, get a feel for how someone works and what they need, but I definitely don't like to hover or micromanage. Definitely not.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question with regard to our municipal utility here in Boulder City. We do have electric, water, wastewater and landfill. What in your background would relate to management of that utility?
Sure. So with the city of Leavenworth, we operate a wastewater treatment plant and a refuse service. And we have a landfill that's no longer accepting new trash that we also take care of and manage. As well as, I'm also the liaison to our airport FBO. So I know that's a big piece here as well. And then in my previous city that I worked for, the city of Derby, we had a water utility where I was able to learn a lot about it. I have not had experience with electric, but I have done a lot of research on how it is structured here with the, the purchase power from the Hoover Dam and then all of the solar. And I believe that with the utilities director, I would be able to manage that and make sure that all the capital improvements are, are being carried out.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Well, Mr. Tetter, again, I really appreciate you coming here to Boulder City. I know you were given a brief tour of the town this morning. I believe you've indicated in the past that, you know, you've done some research on our city. Anything that you would like to comment?
I only have three questions this time. My first question is essentially in all my research, I've gotten a really good understanding of some projects you have on the horizon, like the, the new pool initiative, the compensation study, which we did one a couple of years ago. The facilities, planning and upgrades and much more. But I was just wondering if there were any other wide-view initiatives or projects that, that maybe I didn't catch that might be something you're planning for in the near future?
Anyone like to comment on that? It is Boulder City. There's never a lack of, of plans by people to do things. I, I think the two that you've pointed out there are certainly two of the largest. We do have, again, a municipal utility system here that we are putting a lot of funds into now. But the system, in my opinion, had been neglected for some period of time after it was turned over by the federal government. So I think that would probably be one of the large focuses is how we are going to manage the rehabilitation and maintenance of our utilities.
Thank you. So my second question is, are there any intergovernmental or community-based partnerships that you'd like to see grown or fostered in the, in the near future from where they are now?
Anyone? Councilmember Adams?
Well, just say on a personal level, for somebody who serves on the board of the Nevada League of Cities, that I think there could be, I, I think some of it is on the communication level on their side. But I think in general, building that, that communication and maybe hopefully that would then support that league a little bit better. And then thus helping just, you know, the Nevada cities at large, I think, is something that I think could definitely use some, some, some love and attention.
Understandably, thank you. My final question is, I was just wondering if there were any hesitations that any of you might have about moving forward with, with me as your candidate?
Anyone? You know, I, I will say that I, I think after going through this process, yourself and Mr. Norberg are excellent candidates for this. I certainly have no reservations with regard to you or Mr. Norberg at this time.
Great. Well, I've truly appreciated the, the wonderful tour and getting to, getting to know the staff a little bit this morning. And I would energetically and positively give this job 110% and just really enjoy it here. So thanks so much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Ms. McKee, we can go ahead and complete our evaluation sheets here in the next few minutes. At that point, I think we would reconvene and determine how council wishes to proceed from that point.
Correct. That would be what we would be looking for.
All right. Again, we will take 15 minutes then and we will reconvene at 1:55. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. We have now completed the interviews of our two finalists for the city manager position. I think there's probably two ways we can go and, and would encourage anyone if they have other ways. You know, I would certainly want to see a compilation of all the evaluations that each council member has done. We could take another recess and allow Mr. Bolt and Ms. McKee to do that compilation, come back into session and discuss further. Or we can have that compilation done. We do have a meeting scheduled for, I believe it's next Thursday, to conduct the city clerk interviews. And we could also discuss the city manager selection process at that time. So I would look to other council members, any other suggestions? Do we want to move forward this afternoon? Or do we want to have this done next week at the next scheduled meeting? Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be more attentive to doing it, the, the second option that you had, to give the community and the, you know, if the department heads had any input, give them time to provide any input to us as a council as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I think, I think I would lean a little bit that way. I mean, obviously it's important to have, you know, see the evaluations and how that. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, marks and scores don't always add up to the, the entirety of the picture. So I think allowing that to sit a little bit and, and kind of rereviewing and thinking about, you know, what was here. I think we've got two really great candidates. So, you know, making sure we make the right decision is important.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would have no problem with making a decision today.
All right. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm, I, from a strictly analytical perspective, I, I, my first thought is let's do this today because we're here and we're, and we're dealing with two candidates as opposed to the evaluation or the scoring on five. I, I'd be happy doing it today. I understand the logic of waiting a week and, and getting any feedback, but I'm not sure that would be forthcoming. And personally, I'd like to keep the, the different hiring processes clean as opposed to having to discuss more than one topic at the next, at the next meeting or one position.
So it appears we're split. You know, again, I think there is much to be said for allowing some time for each of us to get some feedback from the community. You know, we have been at this process now for seven months, I believe. It will take some time to do these compilations. Probably not a huge amount of time, but it will take some time to do that. I, I guess I would lean more towards then waiting until our next meeting. I, I take into consideration what Councilmember Bridges had stated, that the, you know, we can move forward or we can give this a little time to sit with each of us. As far as, you know, mixing the two, I think we're perfectly capable of considering those things at one meeting, doing the interviews for the city clerk position and then discussing this decision. Anyone else have any thoughts on this? Mr. Bolt, do you have any input that you would like to give us on the process?
No, I understand the two positions and either way is fine with us and we'll facilitate any way we can. All right, thank you. Ms. McKee, do you have any comments to make?
No, that would, I mean, certainly you had the department head meet with the candidates. You had the meet and greet. Might be worthwhile to see what they've had, what they might be able to share with you about their thoughts on it. So I think waiting a week would at least allow that to happen if it was going to happen.
All right. Well, I will make a motion then. I think we do need a motion then, right, as far as direction to staff? I'll make a motion then that the evaluations be compiled, the information be included in the packet for the meeting next week and that we take this subject up at the meeting at that time.
Second?
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. We will do it that way. And any other direction that's needed at this time, Mr. Bolt?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We will then move to our final public comment period. Comment during this time may be on any item. Speakers have up to five minutes. And please be clear and concise. Ms. Polk?
Thank you. I'm Barbara Polk. I'd like to comment on the selection of the city manager. They are both strong candidates. The first candidate seems to be very strong on people's skills. But I was extremely impressed with the in-depth research and specificity, specificity of the second candidate. Definitely focused on Boulder City specifically. And that impressed me. I know he's young, but he is smart and he's, he's doing, he's done a lot to prepare for the job that I didn't really hear before. So that's basically what I have to say. I really liked the second one.
All right, thank you. Any member of the public can call in at this time to make public comment. The phone number is 702-589-9629.
I'm gonna have to hang up with you now.
Someday we'll figure out how to get multiple phone lines. It's coming, July. Again, this is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to call in, the number is 702-
The left?
589-9629.
Public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make public comment.
Go ahead.
All right. This is Judy DeShane. I was able to meet both of the candidates at the meet and greet earlier today. And I was, I don't envy you, the council, at having to pick a choice. I did enjoy talking to both of them and feel they are both very strong and good candidates and would do well for Boulder City. I did like the gentleman from Colorado a little bit better only because he seemed more in tune for my conversation with him. But that's only a, a very small impression. But I just, that was my feeling after the meet and greet. So thank you for your attention. Bye.
Thank you. The phone lines available? Anyone wishing to make public comment? The phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails received for final public comment?
No comments were received.
Thank you. Again, if anyone wishes to make public comment, the phone number is 702-589-9629. zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. All right, hearing no others, we will close the public comment period then. And I, again, want to thank staff for the turnaround from last night's meeting to this afternoon's meeting. Thank our candidates for coming and, and spending some time with us. And we are adjourned.